Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
President.
Mr. Fraser is not here this evening. Mr. Lance is not here this evening. Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Mr. Seiver?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
You have four members present.
Thank you. This is a regular meeting being conducted by the committee as a whole until we're taking care of business and I'm going to ask that it be quiet, listen, no talking in the audience and if that does not occur, you will be asked to be removed from this meeting. The first item on our agenda is the Comcast table for the proposed transfer franchise to Greatland. Ms. Seymour?
Thank you. Obviously, we have been from a council a few times on this transfer request. At this point, we have worked out what Southfield is an appropriate resolution of the issues and our recommendation at this time is that council approves the transfer. Mike Watson is here, who we will recall from a couple of meetings that we've had him, outside lawyer who's been assisting us with this. So, I'd ask Mike maybe to go through kind of the terms of what the settlement or the resolution would be and then we can come back to the discussion if you are so inclined.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here once again. I should preface my remarks by saying that I think it's fair to say that Southfield has probably obtained the best protection for its residents of any community in the state as far as I'm aware and we've been involved in a number of these deals. So, that's, I think, pretty clearly good news. So, you're all familiar with the fact that Comcast and Time Warner turned it into an acquisition arrangement. As part of that, Comcast was spinning off some subscribers, fortunately, or fortunately perhaps.
Excuse me. Can you speak into them?
That includes Michigan?
Can you speak into them?
I wasn't sure if I was being picked up or not. How's that?
It's fine.
Okay. So, there's this spinoff of some of Comcast subscribers from across the Midwest, including the state of Michigan subscribers, and those are going to an entity that will ultimately be called Greatland, which will be administered in part by Charter Communications, which operates north of the southeast Michigan area. And as part of that, due to your rights to review transfers and the right to approve or deny those, along with a number of other communities across the Midwest, council were engaged and so were CPA experts who conducted study of the proposed transfers and various aspects of the deal. There were concerns about whether this transaction was being properly funded or not, and of course, it's still ongoing and so all the numbers were not available, but that was one of the concerns that came out of the report. And so, that was one of the focuses of our negotiation with Comcast and the folks who are going to take it over from Greatland and Midwest Cable. And that also led to discussion about the INET that you have here in terms of there's an issue above ownership and also who's going to run that INET, which is critical to your operation here during, after this transfer. There were concerns about that as well. And so, that was also a big point in the negotiation. The bottom line is that you have secured continuation of the INET you've enjoyed for, I think, 15 years. You have secured another four years to 2019 at no cost to you, which continues what you've enjoyed. The alternative, one of the alternatives, was to purchase Comcast services, which were, I think it's fair to say, several hundred thousand dollars per year. And so, the savings to the city is substantial. There's also a provision and a certification and guarantee from Comcast and Greatland that there will be no rate increases to your residents as a result of the costs related to this deal between the various companies. And that also obviously was an issue of great concern. And then, also, those companies are guaranteeing that they have the resources or have the resources available to do all of the franchise operation and commitments that they've made in the franchise agreements without deletion or disruption of service to the subscribers. So, that's the deal that's in front of you this afternoon and I think that with Susan's help and all of the staff's help, we've got together a pretty good deal.
If I could add, there's also a commitment that would be a permit for the city to offset some of the legal fees that you've incurred in this process. So, I think that from our standpoint, it gives us four years knowing that the INET is in place and that makes our IT director extremely happy. So, that's always been something at the top of our minds to make sure that we have that level of communication. So, we've got four years now to, you know, think about what steps the city goes forward in terms of that critical communication. So, that with the other commitments, at this point, we are recommending that council approves this. If you're so inclined, it would be on the agenda this evening at seven o'clock for formal approval of the transfer.
Mike, you said that there'd be no rate increases to residents for how long?
Well, no rate increases related to the cost of this transaction.
Okay.
Rate increases in the industry have been in the range of five to eight percent per year and we were looking at probably double that based on our CPA's, your CPA's number analysis. And although Comcast and Greatland didn't agree with that, we were looking at that. So, we're looking at 15%. And so, the guarantee is there will be no such raises related to the transaction and that would be essentially forever. There's no limitation time wise.
All right. So, in other words, they could find another reason to increase rates.
A very common reason that has been offered is the cost of the program, which they purchase on the market.
Yeah. Okay. I hear from lots of people about how expensive Cable is.
I think that nationwide, wouldn't you agree, Mike?
Absolutely.
It certainly isn't just Southfield.
Yeah. And frankly, partly the reason, I think, why at this point, the FCC has again adjourned the dates for the deadline for review of this whole transaction. When this was filed by Comcast a year ago, it was supposed to have been done back in, I think, January of this year. Comcast is even saying now it will be the fall of this year and FCC has put on an indefinite extension of time to continue considering all this. I think it's fair to say there's been a shift in thinking about some of these issues in Washington as we saw two weeks ago with the Internet order, that frankly, the industry did not expect Title II type treatment of Internet. So, I think there's starting to be a shift toward perhaps more consumer oriented thinking.
A lot of money every month.
Two ninety.
Nine? Hundred fifty dollars?
Yes, two ninety.
Any other questions, council? I have a question for Comcast. Let's see the representatives.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Who's capable to suggest a transition?
Twenty-nine, eight thousand Franklin Road, two-seven-eight-hundred Franklin Road, I should say, south of.
Okay. So, we can say that we won't need interruption services?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, what about once the change takes place? Will our residents have to turn in boxes or nothing changes? Is that correct?
Madam President, there should be a seamless transition. Essentially, as Mr. Watson mentioned, this is potentially a change of control from the top. There will not be a decrease in service nor an increase in rates. We envision this, as he just mentioned, sometime within the next three to four months, this transition to take place and you'll be stuck with me as well. That's my understanding. So, that won't change either.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Mike, you said seamless transition.
Transition. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nothing else you want to add?
Other than the fact that we appreciate working with the city, we continue to be a partner with this city, whether it's Comcast or Greatland Connection. So, we look forward to the transition and on day one, we're up and running as to do complete servicing of this great city.
Thank you for your patience, ma'am. As you know, this was something that we really had to thoroughly review and make sure that our residents were taken care of.
No doubt about it.
We appreciate your patience.
I have another question. You're going to keep the, is Greatland going to keep the facility that it has in Southfield?
Yes.
Okay.
Which includes the facility that I work out of on Franklin Road as well as on Telegraph by technical operations.
And the final thing I want to say, great time.
Well, thank you. Is that a go blue comment?
Should be green.
Okay.
Should be green.
Also, to the man, I went to U of D, so I didn't put all that. Thank you.
First of all, you're a good gentleman.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm excited when our agenda is amended to a utility disposal.
Madam President, red grounds out of the water town, on our consulting areas, considered to address. During our regular meeting, the city attorney will introduce the proposed revisions to the city's sewage utilities, disposal ordinance. About 15 months ago, we started taking a look at this ordinance and how it was originally drafted and how we compared to other communities. And we were getting some input that our rates were higher than other communities and we spent some time taking this apart, trying to figure out how we were different. The first is we are redefining a sewer unit as equal to one single family home is one of the larger pieces. Then we're looking to adopt, we're coming along with resource commission's schedule. We're doing the assignment factors. And then, when we did the remodeling in peace, there was a question for the number of restrooms in that facility. Our ordinance was silent to a capacity that had been acquired when the original building was built. And Doug Smith, who worked at the community college inquiry, this piece of property, and making inquiries on a frequent basis, did we get some kind of credit on redevelopment for what was originally put there? Well, in the absence of science, we needed to put something on our thoughts. We took a look at what other communities were doing and determined our reuse, real estate utilities. And what we're putting in place is that what is on the property will stay with the property as a credit and should not be transferred to another site and such. So, on the redevelopment of the former remodeling site and as we go through the lifecycle and the redevelopment process, those credits will be in place for the new owners. We had a similar situation on the St. Beat site. There was a small number of our reus that had been installed originally, but again, there was no process for credit of those. And then provide a sanitary intercepter fee worksheet for tracking and reviewing the unit assignments. Rhett, you run it?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I guess I'd add that besides what the administrator indicated, this wasn't just us. We actually did, we did an initial review and some comparison of Southfield's ordinance relative to some other neighboring ordinances, but then really we met with engineering department, public services department, the building department, and then ultimately when we came to some kind of recommended practice changes, we met with the legal department to try and work out what the proposed ordinance changes would be. As was indicated, the goal was just that some of the ordinance language reflected practices that didn't necessarily seem to be where, over the years, the practices were at today. So, some of it was a little bit of cleanup. And then, the main fee that's charged in the ordinance for the sake of connecting to the sewer is the intercepter fee and the language didn't really feel specifically with a policy to handle redevelopment. And essentially, Southfield is at a point now where there's not much brand new greenfield development coming in. Most of the development is redevelopment. Common practice in other municipalities is to give some consideration for fees that had already been paid because that property would have contributed through those earlier fees to the cost of the initial infrastructure that was necessary to build the larger interceptor sewers in the city. So, the committee kind of, or group, I guess, or unofficial committee, the group kind of came up with a recommendation that we better define it. We found a worksheet that another community had as an example. The worksheet gives a good document because one of the burdens or challenges is, you know, over a long number of decades, the use can actually change more than one time and then having a good record keeping or method to keep track of that. So, there's a worksheet that we come up with that staff can use to kind of track that. For the burden of redevelopment, some of the language deals with the fact that the developer is responsible for bringing in an escrow account, so is the building department staff who would go through the plans to try and review the validity of the proposed credit. Those costs will obviously be borne through the escrow account so the city doesn't expend funds there. And then, another thing that was mentioned is this idea of an REU, residential equivalency unit, is a pretty common accepted practice throughout the industry to define how much impact a particular use has on the system, where one residential house is assumed to be one unit and any other use is extrapolated out as a factor of what a residential unit is. The city had its own table or REU table in the ordinance. This is a similar issue many other communities are struggling with. Uses change over time. What a dentist office used to use 30 years ago for water isn't the same that a dentist office uses today. Car washes have a lot more to be used, et cetera. And so, it's a pretty big burden for one municipality to keep up with, you know, the research in changing times with an REU table. And so, most entities in the area now are referencing an REU factor table that's published by the Oakland County Drain Office or now the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office. Their last updated version is from 1998, but they have been looking to try and do a more comprehensive update of theirs as well. So, it seems logical to adopt by reference of another table rather than having the city carry out the burden of trying to continually update that process. And I guess it's assumed that at some point, they probably would do it and update as well. So, I don't know if that, maybe that's a good quick summary. I can try and help with any questions too.
Any questions, council?
Would this change the resident single family?
There is no increase to rates. We have a mature system. This entire original structure was put in place to help capitalize a system well that is being built. What we couldn't figure out is at some point around the eighties, the base price tripled. And we didn't, I didn't read this sheet, but if you were doing, we took a look if you're doing a development, if you're in Southfield and in Troy, and we were three times higher than if you're building the same development in Troy. To our rate structure, this will not increase our sewage rate system. In fact, let me say this, the budget that's being proposed to the mayor right now, we have a water rate increase of fourteen and a half percent from stock law and we're only proposing a four and a half percent increase in our water rates to our residents. That will probably be one of the lowest increases of all of Oakland County. We'll still be in the lowest quartile, but the investment that this body has made the last two years in rebuilding that infrastructure has helped us tighten up our loss. And as we've gone through this water rate study with Plant Moran, we've been able to keep, we've been able to absorb one of the large, you know, basically 10% of that increase within the existing system because we've decreased our loss. This item will really enhance our competitiveness on redevelopment of sites. The fact that our base price was, we started three times higher and then tying our rate structure to Oakland County's rate structure will be right in line with the other communities.
Maybe one thing, I'm sorry.
So, if I had a building that I tore down, I build something new, obviously I've got a smack to the sewer, but the infrastructure's already there. So, I'm trying to understand if, so a new building would have actually a lower connection fee then?
You would actually, on the new building, let's say you had 20 credits and you were building a building with 18, you would pay nothing. Under the old structure, you didn't get any credits. You had to repay and one could argue that that landowner had to, just 30 years ago, 40 years ago, paid the initial capital cost. And that's when the city was using that mechanism to build out our system. The last, looks like since the mid eighties, we baked all of that into our rate to maintain and rebuild the system.
So, what we have now is really regressive for, it's not encouraged redevelopment.
That's correct.
So, this takes the hurdle out of the way. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, this will move to our, we have no attorney.
Under the attorney's portion, it's as an ordinance.
Okay. The next item is for 2015, 2016, 2014.
The housing community committee members, council members have seen some of these sheets. Rick Lampy was unable to be with us tonight. Each year, we receive an allocation from HUD. Last year, we received 415,045. This year's allocation is 424,081. I'm requesting authorization to schedule the public hearing at the regular council meeting on April 27, 2015. Of the 424,000, I'm sorry, of the, of the 424,081, 20% of the grant is eligible for administrative costs. That 20% figure, if you look on page two, including the fair housing, is 84,816. And then, 15% of our money is for public services. We're continuing, we're proposing that we continue to put 20,000 into our emergency relief.
One's a chore, one's a housing.
This is an annual process that we go through. Of the 424,081, we're proposing 84,816 go into administration. That's on page two of my letter. And then, public services, which cannot exceed 15% of the allocation, or 63,612, we're proposing 20,000 for our human services emergency relief, 23,612 for our TOS program and our Southfield youth assistance, 20,000. The last two years, we've not funded any outside agencies. Within that public service of money, HUD does like to see us using part of our money to prevent homelessness, the emergency relief assistance that our human services department provides. We do help people pay rent and cover shortages, so that does meet that obligation for dealing and covering and servicing homelessness. The maps I pointed out was, we handed out, the first one on shore, we've historically put 150,000 into the chore program. The long sheet, that is for the 1114, you can see the dots represent an address that we've serviced throughout the city. And if you look at the chore sheet, I was very pleased to see a very dispersed positioning when you look at those addresses. And you can see the addresses we've worked on. By the 27th meeting, I have staff doing a pie chart to show you how those monies are spent. Some of it's spent for repairs to furnaces, some for leaf raking, snow removal, grass cutting, tree removal, plumbing repairs, electrical repairs. We're going to produce a pie chart showing you the breakdown of that 150,000. We're proposing 30,000 into rebuilding together and 56,000 into code enforcement activities. And then, we're proposing another 39,653 into ADA. There is some movement in some of those other numbers at the top that if council wanted to move some of the top numbers around, that's certainly within your prerogative. The second map shows activity of the ship and the Oakland County Home Program. And with the second map, there should be an eight and a half by 11 printout that has the ship projects for the last three fiscal years. And then, you'll recall a year ago, we moved and became part of the Oakland County Home Consortium, that 140,000. I'm very pleased to see as of today, the first year, a rate around 127.5 has been spent in Southfield so far. So, that was money previously going to the state of Michigan that wasn't hitting Southfield and that has been going into Southfield homes. And that second map shows you the dots of where the home dollars have gone from the county, one year of home, and then we showed three years worth of ship activity. So, again, the action that we're requesting is simply to schedule the public hearing. If there's a consensus, we will schedule that for Monday, April 27.
Any questions, council?
How much, Madam Chair?
Mr. Mayor.
How much did the allocation difference become last year, this year?
Well, last year, you had 415,000 and this year, 424,000, so just a little, around 9,000 more.
And this used to be around 600,000 at one time.
It used to be a lot more and if you were to index it for inflation, over the 40-year history of the program, and I'll have this for the April 27 meeting, the city has received over 20 million dollars from HUD in the 40-year history of the program. And you're correct, we've not kept up with inflation. If you were to index some of that, we should be receiving just around 2 million a year. It just hasn't been there since 2008.
I've got a couple of questions. The Southfield youth activity, how many youth are benefiting from those dollars and is that for summer camp or is that for?
That is for summer camp and youth. For the 27th, we can get you a breakdown. And we can, we do, in the last year, we're entering, I've had Mr. Lampy create a contract with each of the agencies and we're now getting quarterly reports, anyone we're funding. So, we do have activity. A big bulk of that funding is for summer youth. Some of it's used for memberships for Southfield residents to the Boys and Girls Club in the field zone, but we can get you a breakdown of how those funds have been expended as well.
Okay. And my last question, in terms of the code enforcement, what additional enhancements will we see with code enforcement with these dollars?
The, we've used that to pay for some of the two men in the truck, the equipment, rakes, leaf bags. I think last year, we bought a new lawnmower for them. I can get you a breakdown of what we've used that for. And basically, we've been able to provide relief to our general fund for equipment and expenses that otherwise we would have been looking for a general fund to cover. So, but it's pretty much, there's a little bit for labor, but materials, rakes, leaves, brooms, shovels and equipment.
Okay. So, it's a little for labor. Do we need to increase it to put more boots on the ground in terms of making sure that the streets look good, neighborhoods look good with trash to pick up and those areas that are very. with trash to pick up in those areas that are very important in terms of the code?
I believe this does put boots on the ground because it does pick up some personnel. We have roughly about twenty-five percent of the city as an eligible area, but because this is an income-based program, we can't charge it a hundred percent, but we need to be able to build a logical nexus as to what we're charging HUD for. They will, they come in on an annual basis and do a monitoring visit, review all of our expenditures, and we have to be able to justify, you know, what that nexus was for that item.
Okay, thank you.
Well, on the twenty-seventh, we'll have a PowerPoint, and we'll go through this and then open it up for public comment.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Madam President, and Mayor Patani, and fellow elected officials, with the meeting that we had last week, the COW, there was a few appointments that were being, a few positions that were being transitioning among members of the city staff. One of those positions, that was going to be my deputy treasurer, my current deputy treasurer, who's going to become the deputy fiscal director, Mr. Jim Pierce, James Pierce. And so with that, with that change, it leaves a vacancy in the position for deputy treasurer. And so as per charter, city charter requires that there's a deputy treasurer. And so I'd like to present before our council, my selection for deputy treasurer, it's Kathleen Hicks, Kathy Hicks. And she's been with the treasurer's department since nineteen ninety. She's worked very, very hard, she's done a great job, she has a great rapport with staff and with all the departments that we work with. And I feel that she would be a valuable asset to our department and to the city. And hopefully, with, we're presenting her at the seven o'clock regular meeting tonight again for an official appointment. But just wanted to have a chance to introduce her to you. And if you have any questions, I could be of assistance with any.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Hello, everyone, I'm the President, Mayor, Council.
Okay, is this better? Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Madam President, Mayor, Council. You have any questions for me? I can answer any questions, but I will send you.
I don't have a question. I'm just delighted that you have the opportunity to make them.
Thank you, I definitely appreciate the opportunity, embracing it. I'm happy to be here. Like you said, I've been here, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six years. It's been a wonderful experience. I love working with the staff and everyone and colleagues and the residents that come in here. It's nice when somebody has a problem and I can help them solve it, and I learn a lot from this gentleman here and Mr. Pierce. It's been a wonderful journey. And I'm just looking forward to continuing and doing more, learning more, giving more.
I just think that's great, just having someone from within that's so talented and moving up in that position. I think it's just great that we have that kind of talent. Welcome aboard.
I just want to thank also the city for being able to provide the educational benefits that we provide for our employees because as part of that program, Miss Hicks received her MBA going to Central Michigan, and that was being able to be part of the education company.
Take advantage of it. I try to encourage people in our department to, yes, cool, take advantage of this stuff. It's out here for you, take advantage or it'll go away. Or you won't be here anymore and you'll have a regret. And you don't want that regret. It's out there for you.
Would you like to have your board and all of you?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the authorization to discuss the grant.
Madam President, July twenty-first, council authorized a supplemental of the grant. This is for security upgrades, key fobs, electronic key fob camera, monitor monitoring, security devices for the former library for what we call the muddy boots building, home to code enforcement building, engineering. That building in the north end of City Hall, the grant does require a fifty percent match. The February twenty-third item of regular council meeting, where council authorized the funding for the DDA, that line item of DDA and security upgrades to city facilities.
Any questions, I'm just...
This will be, then, we're talking about a fifty-eight thousand dollar project, and we're planning on coming out of the general fund, right?
Yeah, coming out of the general fund. It's actually now, it's in a facilities capital fund based on council's February twenty-third action. And it'll also be placed under the superintendent care of the Southfield Building Authority. So the building authority, working in conjunction with our police department and facilities group, will work to make these improvements.
I would just add that in my former life, I installed these in all the school buildings and the fobs, and it just cut down tremendously people who didn't belong, places that, especially at off-hours. And then the cameras also cut down on all kinds of mischief. So I think this is long overdue, and I certainly support it.
I have a question about the box of tapes. How long, do you know, have you idea on the cameras, the things, how long maintained it? Does it, you know, where it's recorded over?
The police department, no, it's a substantial life, it's all digitized. It's a lot longer, but I don't know the exact number of days I can get that for you. But it could be access from remote locations, and because it's digital, it doesn't take up... Yeah, I mean, I think there's a substantial amount of time, like several months.
All right, and now, um, to our meeting. And then this item on our agenda is a special honorary Martin Luther King Drive that was presented to us, and I, okay, a year ago.
We've had a request to consider renaming Civic Center Drive from Evergreen Road to Lhasa Road, Martin Luther King Drive, and looking for direction on this item from council. As you may or may not be aware of, we currently, prior to Martin Luther King Day in January, we put up approximately thirty signs in that area from Evergreen to Lhasa Road, and they're up for the month, at that midpoint of January till the end of February. There's a substantial amount of work in evaluating this, you know, things in consideration. Are the impact to the businesses, changing mailing addresses? Is it a dual address? And then we need to figure out these mapping systems, like all Google and all these other things. So before we go through that exercise, I'm looking for some direction or consensus from council.
Oh, you know, I was under the impression that it wouldn't be necessarily a name change, but in addition to...
So it'd be just a secondary?
Yes, that was my understanding.
So leaving it in place for the...
So we don't, so you don't have to go through that process?
So we would have both names?
That was my understanding of it.
We did this years ago with North Park Drive, and it was still Teen Street because of the Philippine American Center. Somehow that name has come off the street sign, it fell off or something. But it was smaller letters, I think it was maybe purple in color or something. It wasn't your regular green street sign. It was another color, smaller, and it was above. And I certainly support this. I mean, we do it for two months, let's do it for twelve. And it's not going to be an imposition on businesses because they'll still have their Civic Center Drive address. They don't have to change their letterhead or business cards or any of that stuff. But some of the other communities either have a street named Martin Luther King or they have an honorary street. So once again, I favor this as a second name above Civic Center Drive.
I just want to make sure that I was clear about saying, from the task force, the members of team, was that your intention, your request to do something like that, or was it an actual formal change of that street?
Can you come up and give us your name and address for the...
Madam President, this is Honorable Council, Dr. Dean. I reside at two-three, eight-three-one Brazil Avenue in Southfield, Michigan. I have a business in Southfield at two-five, one-four-oh Lhasa Road. And just to clarify this, I am the president of the task force, and we have asked that, does council consider placing a name above Civic Center Drive? This is something that has occurred in other cities, Lansing being a prime example, the Capitol, Logan, Logan Street, they had some of the same issues with consideration of businesses. So what they did is they placed Dr. King's name above Logan Street and it stays there today. So that is what we're requesting. I think that is appropriate, the timing is good, and we would appreciate your support. Barbara Talia is here to answer any questions as well, should you have any. I mentioned her because she's our founder thirty years ago. She helped to institute the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. We're thirty years strong, and we want to have thirty more years.
I'd like to, not opposed to, but I'd like to see a sample of it. I don't want the Civic Center and City Center get confusing. There's a tremendous amount of, you know, we just invested and bought the whole rectangle lot across the street and trying to get it developed, how it's going to be marketed. I'd like to see how it's framed out so that, like you said, so that it is not confusing. And I know Barbara knows, I'd go back and that if I had the first Martin Luther King Day in the city of Southfield, there in nineteen eighty-five, me and Jackie Vaughn III are the ones who implemented it, made it a holiday in the state of Michigan. So there's not adverse to Martin Luther King, but I'm just concerned about the city center and confusion. Everybody knows the city center, Civic Center, and I'd just like to see how that is displayed and where they're going to be displayed.
Well, I think the report says no, to leave what is currently in place and basically have it all year round, so we're not talking about making changes to what's already in place.
It would be confusing doing that, it's existing, and everybody has seen it, that's why it's there appropriately, to honor Martin Luther King on that day and that week. So it can be seen. I mean, you see it's different or the same, then it becomes confusing to the people who work and come to the Civic Center. I just, like I said, you know, you have to be careful when you start looking at changing things, especially when people are familiar with areas and they're looking, it's just like we have a city center board, you know. And they don't even know that this request is even before us, you know, how they see it. And that's all the businesses, you know, from Eight Ten Mile Road all the way to Lhasa, you know, the entire city center board. And I would just like to, like I said, I'd like to see how this is going to be presented.
Excuse me, yes, thank you. I'm not in favor of it insofar as renaming Civic Center Drive. Civic Center Drive talks about the center of the city government. I'm fully in favor of it being done during Martin Luther King, during the month of the, you know, the ceremony and the honor to Martin Luther King, but I'm not in favor of changing the name. I'm not even in favor of putting it up on the sign at Civic Center Drive. I'd like to find some other place that we could rename a street, but not Civic Center Drive. So I, and I've also heard also a lot of people, knowledgeable people, not just, not just ordinary, you know, people that should meet every day, that in other communities where they've had this, that it's been considered the bad part of town. And that concerns me, that's a very unhealthy thing to do, but apparently it's quite common, people think you're in the worst part of town or the ghetto. And that, that disturbs me. But I'm not in favor of renaming Civic Center Drive, and I really don't even want to see it be a combined. Somewhere else nearby, I'm not in Civic Center.
Well, again, I think the report has been to leave the current sign there in place, and then it'll stay up from... Moving forward, I guess we would ask for a Rule Ten and...
I'd go for a Rule Ten.
Normally, we don't do a Rule Ten when we have a seven o'clock following. Only because if there's a meeting in act, we're going to be in...
All right, I'll withdraw my...
Regular session.
Which name is going to be on top?
We generally don't, just because the basis for Rule Ten is that there's a meeting in act. Oh, but if there's a meeting in an hour, all right, that's why we just typically don't have that.
Um, Chair, can I clarify how we can introduce this at seven o'clock then?
We can introduce it under the council...
Council portion could come up, and there could be a motion and...
Well, which name is going to be on top? I mean, the real name is Civic Center Drive, it's going to be on right.
It's smaller letters, obviously.
But the lower on top?
Above, yeah. They do this all over, honestly.
All over.
And we've done it before.
I'm not opposed to doing somewhere else, I just don't want to do that.
I hear you, I just wanted to help you with it.
Thank you.
All right, so it'll come at our seven o'clock.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
We will have two individuals under the communication portion. First person is Camera Zero. You have three minutes to get to the council.
The first person is Gerard Mullin.
Gerard Mullin.
Thank you. Got to look at the agenda.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is Post Office Lot One Fifty-Five, South of Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven. This city will be celebrating its fifty-seventh birthday on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. This is a mature city with an immature council that is undisciplined and unlawful. For example, at the last televised council meeting, I pointed out that you folks illegally approved your own yearly meeting schedule at the fourth meeting of the year instead of the first meeting of the year. And you folks managed, in the meantime, to sneak in two secret meetings in between the first and fourth meeting. Tonight's COW is the third secret meeting of this year, which is par for this council. Let me explain. At the last council meeting, you folks added tonight's COW to your de facto schedule. But you folks failed to update your adjure, yearly meeting schedule, as required by the Open Meetings Act. And I quote, "If there's a change in the schedule of regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted, within three days after the meeting at which the change is made, a public notice stating the new dates, times, and places of its regular meetings," unquote. If you go out into the... If you go out into the hall tonight or this afternoon, you will see that your de jure yearly meeting schedule has not been updated to reflect your change in your de facto schedule in violation of the Open Meeting Act. Oh, by the way, Madam President, this screw-up, this violation of state law, have been on your watch, on your ship, and under your leadership. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Let me clarify, Mr. Mullin, the meeting was not proposed, not speaking meetings, not violating the Open Meeting Act.
Pamela Gerald, P.O., box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. As an independent voice for Southfield, I can still be reached at 248-346-0439. Everyone in this room has heard me say that passion has no address. Saying that, I am honored and humbled that you, Sylvia Jordan, a Republican candidate for Southfield Mayor, continue to make me and my presence at these council meetings very relevant. The employees, the residents in this city, the great city of Southfield, know several things about me, and they are as follows. I have always been a strong advocate for public safety. I have spoke for over a year and a half trying to get a permanent police and fire chief for accepting the SAFE program for hiring more firefighters and hiring the two police cadets that waited for over three years. I have always been a strong advocate for fair labor negotiations for all the employees that work for this city. This city has browbeat, duped, bamboozled, and forced concessions to help make the city's finances poor, and how do you pay them back? You hire a city administrator, Fred Zorn, who is a non-resident, give him a raise, and now he's making a hell of a salary. You promote Shelley Freeman to Business and Economic Development Director and paying her a starting salary of $90,150, and she doesn't even live in Southfield. Business retention, Northland is closing, need I say more? You have disrespected all the employees in the city by not giving them the raises that they deserve in as much as eight to 15 years, and some of the workers have never gotten a raise. I have always been a strong advocate for residents, helping them to resolve their issues, and I am not, and I repeat, not, an elected official. What I am, Madam Chair, is a God-appointed and God-anointed problem solver, an independent voice, and a person that you can always count on. Sylvia Jordan, you cannot destroy what God has put in place. Lastly, I have always been a regular attendee at these council meetings for about 29 years, sometimes the only person in the audience. So in closing, Pastor Jordan, you can go to any department, any resident, talk to the employees, attempt to slander my name and character, but it won't work. Remember, favor ain't fair. You know that God has elevated me and given me favor in my life. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah, Pastor Jordan.
And I'll correct you as I do, Mr. Mayor, why don't you call up to the Democratic Party in Lansing and ask them how long I've been a Democrat? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And again, you live in Southfield. I mean, you're in the front of the building. All right, entertain a motion. Before, we have a motion by Ms. Seymour, for the... Who wants to hold that small favor? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Seifer?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser is not present, and Mr. Lewis is not present. Ms. George?
Yes.
Okay, four numbers in favor.